Dr. Portolino?
Here.
Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fannin? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Pedizino?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Suckerman? Dr. Bodra?
Here.
Ms. Vialla? Mr. Sun?
What's your vision? What's your vision in the United States of America? And is there a public which stands among nation underground invisible in the reading of just so?
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with revision of the Act, the Montpel Township Board of Education provides a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montpel Township Municipal Building, all Montpel Public Schools, the Montpel Public Library, the Montpel Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record and the Montpel Tap into the Board's official newspapers on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, can you give us your time to report? I'm sorry. Will this be first? Okay. As progress, please. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, so we're just gonna start off with some things that happened in the past month. So on March eighth, the school council department held a college fair. We had representatives from colleges across the United States as well as the military available to the students. And it's just an excellent opportunity for our students. And then on March eighth also was the grand opening of the new Truck Wells Mustang Cafe. Students and staff enjoyed the opening specials of the free hot coffee, nitro poker, tea, or hot chocolate as a treat to breakfast along through a street. And this movie machine was also very popular. And then from March eleventh to March thirteenth, FPLA had their annual state leadership conference trip to Harrah's in Atlantic City. The conference was a great success and we had ten students fall part of the national leadership conference, which is this year in Orlando, Florida. Also, flag football players Aiden Vialla and Alexis Riley represented Pablo at MetLife Stadium last month, where they were interviewed for media day and they were being some of the top players in the group. And then Key Club had their forty-second annual volleyball marathon on March eighth. This year's theme was around the world and each of the sixteen teams chose one country to represent. The winning country was Ireland and Brazil won the costume contest. The MTHS Theater Company performed footloose from February twenty ninth to March third, and this fun family musical was a huge success. MTHS continued its success in National History Day, or NHD, at the New Jersey History Day Regional Contest on Saturday, March second at Montpel University. This year's theme for the competition is turn the page in history, people, places, and ideas. We had four projects that qualified for the New Jersey History Day State Competition at William Patterson University, which is gonna be on May fourth, twenty twenty four. Yesterday, March eighteenth, we had a group of MTHS students and former Hilldo students who spent the day at Hilldo as part of Junior Achievement, and they taught the students about economics, careers, and financials. The students became teachers for the day and had a great time teaching Hilldo students.
So continuing on, uh, the forensics team, uh, completed at the NJSDL State Leadership uh, competition this past weekend. Uh, congratulations to the fellow students who were Montpel's state champs. Um, at Angelina Icah, Isahana, Hershna, and Varsley Parliamentary Debate, Anisha Malindi and Shamak Gav and JV Parliamentary Debate. And the forensics team placed third overall, fifth in speech, and second in debate. Uh, all spring sports, softball, baseball, girls' cross, boys' cross, girls' flag football, boys' tennis, and track and field are underway, and they should start their athletic, official athletic competition soon. The class of twenty twenty five currently goes to the Krispy Kreme fundraiser to raise money for their upcoming senior events, and orders are due this, uh, next Monday, March twenty fifth. And now for the future, the annual AP government field trip to Philadelphia will be held this Thursday, March twenty first. Students will be touring historical sites such as the Independence Hall and Congress Hall, the Liberty Bell, the President's House, and the National Constitution Center. Uh, also this Thursday at seven P M., there will be a session at the MTHS Media Center for the journey begins, mapping your route to the future. Topics covered will include factors in college admissions, standardized testing, the application process, and establishing guidelines. Current seniors will also share their experiences about navigating the college admissions process. This is for current freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. And finally, Mr. Bushko's Holocaust to the Other Side class will, uh, take their trip to Washington, D.C. next Monday, the twentieth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. But I heard that the poppy bar is a big success. AI, I think, is a lot of, and also I just wanna mention that focus was great. Another stellar production from Montpel High School from the state.
It was just a change came out every year. It's been a long before. We're just such an exceptional, exceptional period of time. And probably gonna say something like shit, I'm not gonna say the school. I saw another production going to school last year. Yeah, just school that hasn't gone. It was just really over the past. Yeah, just such an exceptional drama queen. Really supporting the whole community. Back from a long time ago.
Oh, that could be admirable.
And I would also just mention real quick while we're talking about the arts. Uh, this Thursday, Friday, we have the czars spring new school, ten dollars for tickets. Go right to high school, come and, uh, support it. You'll see their kids are gonna be in the high school next year, probably. So it's a good thing to come in. And again, those protections are also very.
Excellent. Really appreciate you touching upon all the highlights of all the schools. Uh, it's wonderful. Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna hold my record for the one. We have some special guests here in early today's morning. Uh, we have Mr. Connelly, wanna come on up? And then, of course, the initial students. This is the IBPF Business Plan Presentation. Connelly, wait, wait, before you go. Connelly was also the recent recipient of the Chamber of Commerce Public Service Award. So congratulations to you on that. Thank you very much. Is this working?
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, as Dr. Morgan mentioned, uh, I have a couple classes. Now, last year, you talked about another, old NSG was in here today, their business plan presentation. This year, I have two different companies. It's great for the students, uh, start the year and, um, interview for different positions in a company. Virtual company that's part of a, uh, an economy with other high schools. Uh, they can come up with a business idea and, uh, get into their positions and they want a company for the full year. Uh, this year, unfortunately, to have another set of great students, uh, both of which are qualified for national competitions for the first time. Uh, one that you'll see their business plan presentation, ChargeCaddy, and the other envision for their marketing plan that they submitted. So both have qualified, which is great, will be in New York City next month for the national competition. So I'd like to give them a round of applause just for both qualifying for the national. And with that being said, when the first team, ChargeCaddy, they're gonna present their business plan to you. Uh, we're trying to figure out first, but the best place for the six of them would be here? Is it right over here? You can try the photo mic, we can use the other mic. Just hold that too.
Raise your hand if your computer is not at one hundred percent. Well, I know mine isn't. And after completing a survey of one hundred seventy-five staff students at Montpel Township High School, we found that seventy-four percent of people often forget to charge their laptop, and seventy-nine point five percent of people often do not have their chargers with them. So with this problem in mind, what if we told you we had a solution so you never have this problem again? Introducing ChargeCaddy. Selling charging computer cases, we redefine how the world stays powered. Hi, my name is Priyanka Bully and I'm CEO of ChargeCaddy, and joining me is...
Doc Lobina, Marketing Vice President.
Moon Telesee, Chief Marketing Officer.
And I'm Fire Chief Operating Officer.
Tines Goddaker?
I can be here.
Connor Smith, the Chief Financial Officer.
In the rapidly evolving digital world we live in, a pressing issue has emerged, which is the forgetfulness to charge our laptops. Coupled with the natural battery degradation of computers, this leads to shorter durations of power retention. This poses an extreme threat to our productivity as computers are necessary for work and tasks. In response to this problem, we propose ChargeCaddy. ChargeCaddy is equipped with a battery that lasts up to twenty-four hours and is made out of polycarbonate plastic, which is extremely harmful for the environment. The way the product works, well, there's a battery that is attached to the back of the computer case and can be, there's a port that can be plugged into your computer. While the battery does need to be plugged into a wall to keep it charged, it lasts up to twenty-four hours, as I said, a little more, which makes sure that your computer will never die in the workplace or in the classroom. Now, I will be talking, passing time to meet him to talk about how our company was founded.
ChargeCaddy founded October of twenty twenty-three by seventeen high school visionaries, operating as a corporation, so offers limited liability protection, passed through taxation, and potential tax agents for business owners.
As we dive into the squad analysis, ChargeCaddy strengths lie in three key areas. These have used customization and personality.
In terms of weaknesses, the main weakness that ChargeCaddy faces is the fact that our product only, uh, caters to the top-two laptop companies in the country, those being Apple and Chrome laptops. Therefore, uh, we're missing out on some sales for the minority that owns the other laptop companies.
Moving on to opportunities. As computer companies update their model, this causes customers to buy the updated ChargeCaddy and fit that in your computer. Also, the business execution cycle is becoming more technical based.
In terms of threats, the risk of our product catching on fire or exploding would deeply harm our reputation. And additionally, technological advances may make our product obsolete to new, new inventions. Lastly, uh, sorry, lastly, the, uh, reduction of, uh, uh, psycho polycarbon plastic in the environment may review our business statement that is that we are an eco-friendly product.
Now, it's the target marketing. We target students aged thirteen to twenty-four as a smooth middle schoolers all the way into post-grad education. We also target millennial J C work, J C workers in the, uh, middle age population. Also, we target suburban and urban areas with high levels of businesses, schools, and universities. So if you've got an active interest we target, our people will be in busy lifestyle and actually get charged against your debt.
So in terms of our product, ChargeCaddy, uh, is this portable charging laptop case that carries three sizes for both Apple and Chrome laptops. When charged to full capacity, our charge can last up to twenty-four hours. Keep your laptop fully charged all day. And in terms of the physical attributes of our charging cases, you can get a ChargeCaddy with solid colors, patterns, custom monogramming, and custom supports.
The ChargeCaddy ranges in price from sixty-four ninety-nine to one hundred ninety-nine, to one hundred ninety-nine nine, depending on the customization and model. We use a penetration pricing strategy in order to attain a higher market share and really raise prices later in time.
So lastly, in terms of promotion, uh, due to our target market of teens to young adults, we plan on advocating for our product and promoting it on Instagram, TikTok. Additionally to this, we attend all in-person and online trade shows in order to obtain that one-on-one connection with potential customers and obtain as much as possible.
Now let's talk about the startup of ChargeCaddy. ChargeCaddy had initial funding of fifty thousand dollars from E E. We also paid, uh, hundred fifty dollars, hundred fifty thousand dollars for investments from three angel investors, and a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the loans of fixed rates of ten point five percent over five-year period. Moving on to break even. ChargeCaddy broke even in December of twenty twenty-three due to our average sales of one point six million dollars from San Fernando Times. Our average selling price is seventy dollars and forty-one cents. Their average cost per sold is thirty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Giving us an estimated gross profit margin of forty-nine point one percent.
As our profit and loss analysis shows, ChargeCaddy's outstanding revenue stream over one point six million dollars will lead to a net income of over sixty-four thousand dollars in just our first fiscal year. We have also implemented debt principles such as the straight-line depreciation method to achieve maximum accuracy in our financial records and projections. Our decision to debt finance over a five-year term for a hundred fifty thousand dollars was in order to raise enough additional capital to cover up our costs. Our rent ratio of one point nine reflects on our ability to handle short-term debt commitments, which assures ChargeCaddy stakeholders in our ability to grow.
Thank you for listening. We are now open for questions if you have them.
You guys auditioned for Shark Tank? It was really, I felt like I was listening to Denise Shark Tank here. It was really entertaining, man, you guys did a great job on it. And, uh, I just says, just so many things we offer this, this would better, just going on this speaking class, we have built a group of customers. And I think it's just so important that kids get involved in our food that this will become, we'll learn the people's functionality and possibly use this product as well.
So does your product include the in-case laptop? Or is it a plugin, sort of like what Ryan has on his laptop?
Yeah, so like the actual case, I don't know if you have like a computer case on your computer. It'll basically look like that, just a bit bigger. It'll just look a bit bigger. It's, um, zero point nine pounds, but there will be a port that does connect into your computer to charge it. So this is kind of what it looks like. It just looks like a regular computer case. It does protect your computer as well, but it charges it at that age, which is a question.
Where are these ChargeCaddies produced?
Um, via the out-of-network warehouse that they fax our products and we buy them at wholesale.
How do you find angel investors?
Well, um, we were tasked with the job of finding great angel investors, and so we basically just, um, emailed, uh, people. For our case, it was, uh, business teachers. So we pitched our idea and, um, they asked us many questions and we got fifty thousand dollars each from them.
How did you initially come up with the idea? Is there anything tightly comparable or is it like no meaning?
Um, so Mr. Connelly, in the beginning of the class, kind of did a lot of exercises to kind of rack our brains on like what kind of products we could do because we are starting this company from scratch. So we kind of came up with a list of problems that us students have and us, we know people who have. And we came up with a list and we decided as a class that this was the most important problem that allowing people's computers do not last the whole day. And this is a unique idea. We did a lot of research because we didn't have to talk about like competitive competitors and many of our business plan and our executive summary. And there's no company that sells this exact product. So there's no direct competitors. We do have indirect competitors because there are chargers and, uh, portable chargers and other things like that. But we are a unique company.
Any other questions?
No standards. Yeah, those are all, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, ask yourself that. How often do you be, how often do you find yourself becoming distracted at work while you're surfing the internet, are losing focus on what you started, and losing productivity? Well, this is why we created a vision. Hi, I'm Aiden Vialla, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer.
I'm Lauren Bergman, I'm the Chief Marketing Officer.
I'm Hannah White, I'm the Chief Operating Officer.
I'm Matt Bumark, I'm the Chief Financial Officer.
So the problem that our vision aims to solve is that two thousand high school students get distracted while they're doing homework. Additionally, seventy-four percent of students get distracted within forty minutes of doing their homework, and forty percent of students get distracted within ten minutes of doing their homework. The solution that we created is a vision, which is a personalized outlet that comes built with a personal AI assistant, has no blue light and no access to web browsers. What this means is that we have a personal AI assistant that adapts to each user's, uh, functions and how they use their computers, and it adapts to the way they work. So, um, it will become smart and learn their study habits, make them a better student. Uh, going on the no blue light, blue light straight from eyes, so we made our tablet without blue light, so there's no eye strain with, uh, studying. And what I mean by no access to web browsers is that students will be able to use, uh, say, School G, uh, School Docs, but they won't be using Google Chrome or any other web browsers such as, um, Bing or Yahoo, because this increases internet service. And so this is our logo and our slogan is inspire, innovate, and envision. So our company overview is, we're an innovative technology firm that was established in October of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we are a state corporation. Our, uh, our headquarters are located in Montpel, Montana. Finally, our mission statement, which is redefine the way individuals engage in technology. With our tablet, we aim to elevate focus and personal, and productivity by integrating intuitive interfaces and personalized productivity tools harnessing the power of artificial intelligence.
Through our vision, we have figured out that this organization charter works best for us, increasing our productivity, we work from the bottom up. Some of our short-term goals include increasing traffic on the company website as well as increasing social media posts still at least four times a week. Some of our long-term goals include establishing a household named Mountain Nation, increasing the overall productivity in students, and expanding our product line to be better for student low-income households. Our progress in social responsibility policy includes reducing paper usage because we are a tablet, minimizing our packaged waste, and using alternative energy sources. So we found a couple of risks. These are our top two risks, a small returning customer base and changing trends. We have mitigated these risks by increasing a monthly subscription, which gives us a common, um, revenue stream, and also having software updates included monthly, which give us new features and also AI is constantly evolving. So this is our competitive analysis. Uh, this is the vision compared to our current competitors and describe marketable and marketable. And our main difference is that we have artificial intelligence and our competitors don't. So our psycho graphics, uh, we market towards those who are value, who value education, are goal-oriented, have a busy lifestyle, and we market to, um, junior high and high school students, which is in the age range twelve to eighteen years old, and those who have a level of high income who are over a thirty, which is beating. Um, we market toward those that be on the migration and tech savvy individuals and those who live in the U.S. and Europe as well as busybodies. So the price of our main product, which is our wireless tablet, is two ninety-nine ninety-nine, and then our app at AI, that we subscribe to, ninety-nine ninety-nine, our link. Um, for our product, our wireless tablet, these are specifically available with left features, which is charging, no open web browser, AI, and no blue light, which doesn't, and so that blue screen their eyes. And we position it in a smart technology market. Um, and our personalized AI sets our product apart from our competitors, which is N B four. Um, our products are sold on our company website, which can be accessed through our social media, Instagram and TikTok, which is also a main form of advertising and information. Instagram and TikTok, um, they share our mission audibly across the country. And we have a number of work you guys available on our website to promote our company.
So now for the financial habits. Um, these are sales projections from November of twenty twenty-three through January this year. Um, this only accounts for our website sales and our out-of-contract sales. And now for the break-even analysis, our break-even plan is just under six thousand dollars and just under one million dollars, which is not yet broken. And now for the P and L. Um, as of April thirty of twenty twenty-four, this is the annual revenue school year. Very projected revenue of one million dollars, or the gross profit of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Therefore, we have a profit margin of just under forty-six percent. Um, our expenses, we are approximately sold of one point one million dollars. Air and operating expenses, just under eighty thousand dollars. This will give us a net income of just under a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now for the balance sheet. As of February twenty ninth, twenty twenty-four, our total assets are valued at about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The majority of the current assets is cash. Um, we also have just under two hundred thousand dollars in liabilities. Our stock, which equity is valued at about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars on a tax-free liabilities, which is our assets.
Now, like you heard about our cutting edge technology. Are you ready to inspire, innovate, and buy our product and vision? Thank you.
Any questions? I just want to, um, where do you produce these?
Yeah, we also outsource, um, and we buy our products. Um, we put it in our core for social responsibility, how, um, we aim to reduce greenhouse gases, um, and we use alternate energy sources and that is through our AI venture.
I definitely wonder if people that have our time go to sin as well, but I need the internet when I work. So how, I can't access the internet?
It's not the internet you can't access. So this will, our product will connect to Bluetooth, but you don't have access to web browsers, so you can't search the internet. It, um, so you basically stay focused and you can only use school apps. So you can't get off task by say like, uh, Googling like the world for the day and the New York Times. Like, it won't let you allow, it won't allow you to do that, but you can get onto Google Docs, School Sheets, Microsoft Word, um, School G, which Montpel uses. So it makes you stay on task.
How does the AI feature work? Does it like, funny the same way?
Um, so a lot of high schoolers tend to struggle with getting like a schedule that works for them, which allows them to be most productive, and that's where the AI assistant comes in. Um, that is somewhere like it will learn from your trends and evolve with you to like learn when you are most productive, um, when you should be studying about your schedule, like when you have this, when it's the right time to focus, that will make you the most productive.
I was wondering that maybe there were two little wires that came off and attached to your ears or something. And anytime you started getting out of focus, it would zap you and, yeah, those shots. If you forget your charger, is it compatible with my tag?
Actually. Um, we actually just launched a new product, our own charging case. For our tablet, it's gonna be on our website in a little bit.
Yeah, they're not happy.
They're cat.
They, they're catting.
They're gonna get sued like that. They're playing it. We'll see what happens in court. I love how you, uh, included inspiring there, you know, following the model of the vision. So, great job there.
Um, how do you guys handle outside distractions like cell phones being right next to the tablet and Instagram things, things offered as AI?
That's kind of like user, not like user ever, but we've created a vision so that you, like, you get this product to stay the most focused, and this is for people who like want to like do well. And I mean, we can't help that people have our phones next to you, but our tablet is make sure that you stay on task.
I was gonna say, two little wires.
Expanding our, as I'm going up to saying, did you think of expanding your marketing? It seems like it's definitely a student tools, but it is true that adults get distracted and if you can get their, um, tools or programs or server on, you know, have you thought of eventually success of expanding out to be able to accommodate with the students?
So maybe somewhere in the future, but I think it was just a program that we've adopted. It's clearly only there for basic students, that's what we're talking about.
Outstanding. Great job. Good luck to you. Thank you, Mr. Connelly. Thank you, students. That was wonderful. Thank you.
Uh, so we will not be having any of our listeners speak tonight. Uh, and Sue Adams usually has, you know, great comments and very supportive of our experience.
So just for my superintendent, uh, before I have a number of things at this point to bring up. Uh, Medlec will be, uh, expanding. Uh, so based on recent survey data, Medlec will be offering a Medlec program to the district where it is closed. This means that parents may sign up for Medlec during the spring break, on Eve, or even Passover this year. Medlec enrichment has expanded. It's going extremely well. There's been a lot of work getting through program off the ground, but it's been hanging off. We believe, uh, we believe that we are profitable both programs right now with thirteen and fifteen students, which is great for the first time around. We feel the program is getting better each year, and we're gonna be able to. We feel the program is getting better each year and we're going to be able to walk. You know, what we should look the, like the development. The town is putting in a new sound system and hopefully they'll be opening next March or summer. So, so these new programs, so the staffs will look out. We'll have more coming up before the end of the school year and hopefully offering some more during the summer. Regarding the school calendar, since we used to, emergency days this year, there will not be any give-back days in the district. So we built in four for the school year and we used to. This means the students will be in school for 182 days and teachers will be working 185 days as per the contract. We still have these two emergency days still built in if needed before the end of the school year. The wording on the calendar at the very bottom was a little bit confusing about give-back days, so we removed it and that's what's on the agenda tonight. So we're asking the board of ed to approve this agenda and remove this wording as we move forward. And we'll clarify that in the future over the next few years. Regarding cell phones, there was a community member that came forward, a policy committee met about a week or two ago, and discussed cell phones, but just in general, I just wanted to bring to everyone his attention that K through eight students are not allowed to use cell phones during the school day, although the students would love to use them whenever they can, not having them has not caused any problems. At the high school, students are allowed to use them while they're not in class. And some teachers do ask them to put a bit of phone caddy on the wall, others ask them to put it away, and then still others ask them to incorporate them in some of their projects or assignments that they're doing in class. There is a discipline code for fractions. The administration has stated that there hasn't really been any problems with cell phone usage regarding these infractions at this level. Regarding building and program changes, the administration had several special education meetings recently regarding changes that will occur next year. Due to the changing needs of the district and the shortage of classroom space in different buildings, some programmatic changes will have to be implemented. Next year, all preschool and pre-K integrated programs will be located at Valley View. This means that the integrated preschool, lift full day preschool, and K5, LLD programs will be consolidated at Valley View. The two existing programs that are at Cedar Hill will be moved over to Valley View now and for the summer. This will enable the district to consolidate resources and better utilize personnel. In addition, two lift ND, multiple disabled programs will move to Willie Mason, will move from Willie Mason to Cedar Hill. Because of the increase in enrollment, the Cedar Hill program will now have three classes devoted to this program. Again, this move will enable the district to consolidate resources and better utilize personnel. A letter will be sent out to the affected families tomorrow explaining these changes in greater detail. Last, STEAM Week is this week. This week, many of the schools will be hosting STEAM Week at different projects. The elementary schools and the high school will be devoting time to projects all week. Valley View, due to outside presentation scheduling and stuff like that, will celebrate STEAM Week next week. And Lazard, who as it always does, celebrates STEAM Week in Agador. This year, it will be occurring by around 8:31. The Montpelins Education Foundation supported STEAM initiative this week. The MEF has provided more than $200,000 in educational grants for the Mount Polk Township Public Schools over the last 15 years. And this year, they provided a district-wide grant to all the schools that was approximately $60,000 instead of the art tools or resources for all schools. And they will be seen in action this week. And that's my report. So I have one more thing that I'm just going to read right now that'll be a resolution. We have a walk-in resolution that the board will be voting on a little later, so I'm just going to read it now. Resolved that the Montpelins Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, hereby waives district policy number 2430, the co-approval activities as it relates to Montpelins High School, student ID number 106495 for the 2024 spring athletic season.
Continue. Do you have anything to talk about?
Thank you.
So while we're getting that going, the administration and Board of Education has been working on compiling the different programs that we will be instituting for the 2024-25 school year. That process begins back in the latter part of last year, and we continue to work on it all the way up until actually this week. This year has been a little bit more challenging than most due to the fact that the pressure financially to stay within the 2% cap is becoming more and more difficult. Back in 2009, the governor put forth a restriction on school districts that they could only raise their taxes by 2% if they were not going to have their budgets voted upon. And as a result, the board has been living under that particular cap this entire time. What that means is that although it has gone to the 2% cap each year over that 15, 16-year period, it can only bring the taxes up to that 2% markup every year. Over the course of the 16 years, the amount of tax levy has increased by about 42%. That's the compounding effect of 32 over 16 years. But the problem is that you have particular costs that are increasing much faster than that. Areas like special ed, salaries and health benefits, and transportation are all areas that have been increasing much faster than the 42% rise in the tax levy. In the case of special ed, it has increased by 50% over that same period. Salaries have increased by about 55%, benefits by 62%, and transportation has increased by 90% over that same period. So the problem you have is that you're only raising the tax levy by the 2%, but you have all these costs that are increasing at a much higher rate. And over the course of the last 15 years, the district has changed its programs, it's built efficiencies into various programs throughout the district in order to try to accommodate that capped amount. So the board faced that issue as it built the 2024-25 budget. The other issue that it faced was projected enrollment. As was mentioned when the presentations were being done on the referendum, we're in a process right now where enrollment is growing. Currently, the enrollment for the 23-24 year is at about 3,400 students. However, the projected enrollment for 25, for 25 is expected to be 35, 65, which is an increase of 127 students. As you can see, there are ups and downs. Some buildings are experiencing more growth, some buildings are experiencing less. In the case of Lazard and the high school, they have some flexibility to absorb students much easier. And that really is due to the fact that their schedules are in blocks where they have the ability to increase, kind of flex a little bit as they go. The place that's more difficult is at the elementary level, where their classes are stagnant. Student is assigned to a homework, they pretty much stay in that homeroom the entire time. And as a result, they don't have flexibility to move about. Particularly in some of our locations, such as Woodmont, we have a really large expected increase in the enrollment, which is going to be difficult to manage when you only have so much space. And that was the third problem that the board faced as they put this budget together. This happens to be a picture of Cedar Hill. If you remember presentations during the referendum, you probably recognize this picture because it was one that was used at the time to go and represent the areas that were going to be under renovation at the referendum past. But we used it in order to show how we manage the enrollment. So after placing all of the different elements in, such as rooms for art and music, media center, and then began to place the students in classrooms, what you find, and this is true in every single building, is you only have so many classrooms that you can actually put students in. And as a result, there is a limit to the number of places that students can actually take their classes. Because of that limit, you're going to see as enrollment increases, class sizes are increasing because we don't have any additional places to put them for them to actually have that homeroom experience that I mentioned earlier. What we did do this particular year is we looked at all five elementary schools. We evaluated their average class sizes at the K2 level and the K3, 5 level, and attempted to stay right around the mark of about 20 kids. That doesn't mean that every single classroom is always going to have 20 kids in it. It's on an average. However, what we did find is we had comparability across all five elementary schools. But the board had to address the issue of space. So as it then moved into formation of the budget, it took all of these pieces into consideration. The proposals from the principals and supervisors to add programs to the educational programs across the district. And from that, we will be implementing a new elementary program. And that elementary program is going to look a little different than what we've been doing in the past. However, that program is going to cause adjustments in elementary staff. Additionally, you have adjustments for Lazard and the high school due to enrollment changes. We will be expanding the preschool and multi-week handicap programs at the elementary level. And the district will be adding American Sign Language and expanding the college credit offerings at the high school. In addition to the instructional programs, we will continue to go and offer programs that address social issues and stress management, as well as behavioral, social, and emotional support to students' needs. As I mentioned, if we can, the increase of only 2% on revenue side means that we have to make adjustments on the expense side. And one of the areas that we made adjustments was in the administrative services. We need specifically focused on scaling down those services and reorganizing them, basically trying to provide the same or more service to students, but in a more economic way. And so that is part of this budget. And then finally, in the area of operations, as we have seen over the last few years, we do expect transportation costs to be rising as a result of the shortage of drivers and the economics of gasoline and parts. We will be doing work on all the schools as part of the long-range facilities plan and as part of the comprehensive maintenance plan. And a lot of that, those different projects will begin over the summer. The board will be doing a presentation called the public hearing on the budget on the 30th of April. That presentation will be held here at 7:30 and we will be able to go into more detail after the budget has been finally approved. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for the presentations, as always. I am greatly concerned. It's the first time we're seeing these numbers. That Woodmont is going to go up very quickly, has it going to go up 25% next year? We're going to almost score 15 minutes. These are all the projections that we're sharing with the president. And we're $399.99. I don't want to go in, so I just, how do you kind of educate 400 kids who just aren't going to be prepared?
Well, with the defeat of the referendum, we said we'd be, you know, increasing class size. And we have to want to put music or art on a park into hallways, you know, they move it around, not intervals, move it around class to class and try to figure out that's what we can and what we can't.
Is there anything concerned about most schools since we gave you a role in this right now?
Well, that is something we can discuss as board, you know, one just, one school is receiving more students than another. Then we can look at some other options as well.
It's just that we, we simplify the school, one's going to apply to one, you know.
That's just for this year. Remember, we have to look at the next five years and not the longer effect. So I can't just come over one year fits. So we'll, we'll talk about that. What rhythm is that?
I'll be sharing my views with you. I'm extremely concerned about that.
Are the projections that Mike is concerned about, are they projections or do you know just what you're talking about?
No, so these are projections right now. So right now, the town housing has not moved as quickly as was anticipated. A lot of housing was supposed to be done months ago. So right now, there's only about 15, 10 to 15% occupancy rate, and it's still not all done. So that, those numbers might not come to fruition right away over the summer based on, you know, the housing market. But we also have to prepare for the worst-case scenario, but it might not be that bad come September. We'll see what happens this summer.
My understanding though, continue what you were saying about that was took an average based on how you distributed resources in classrooms amongst the five elementary to try to keep the class sizes at least for this year. Understanding in this kind of fit specifically this year, to keep the, either the increase at Woodmont, am I right in understanding, is there still going to be around the same class size as all the other schools?
Correct, correct. So that that average of 20 will occur at Woodmont too. So as a result, you had to be more creative, I didn't bring all the pictures, but we had to be more creative in the use of space at Woodmont to, in order so that we could keep that class size the same. Across all the elementarys, you're running from an average around 20 for multi-K to two as well as three, five.
And then the idea would be that each year, based on the projections that we see actually, they don't have to, that make the adjustments into the space resource.
Correct, correct.
So if we, let's say the referendum passed and we had all the new space that we wanted, we would have to fill those classrooms with new teachers. Have teachers been added to this budget?
There, those, that's two different things. So we would have handled the way the teachers, some of them would have been through attrition. I might have had to hire new teachers. Let's just say if a teacher retired at the high school, I might not have hired her back. I would have just, I wouldn't have hired her back there, but I would have hired a new teacher. So wasn't we going to add necessarily more to the budget staffing wise? Does that make sense? But it, because the enrollment of the high schools is increasing, so that was one way to solve that. But most importantly, pushing the.
I guess my ultimate point is can we solve the issue if there even is one, if it's still just based on projections, with just more teachers using the same space?
Well, the problem is there's no space or rooms. So again, the only way you would do that is if I put art or music on a park and then put a teacher in there, that teacher would have to move around to other areas. So space is always going to be a problem for the teacher.
So for example, just to put on this Cedar Hill one again, what we ended up doing, this was the first time we've ever done this, we actually started building the budget by looking at the space first. We first took the number of students projected for that particular building and began to spread them out and try and keep that class size as low as we could. 20 was the best we could do. And we moved things around in order to get that number to work. So for example, if you looked, you look at this particular one at Cedar Hill, you have the multi-handicap program in this building. If you look at Woodmont's, Woodmont has no additional programs within this building because we knew we had higher enrollment. We needed all the classrooms we could possibly get to go and actually utilize for students. If you notice on this particular one, there is that box that's blue that says grade four. It's right next to the media center. That's supposed to be a small constructional area. That was what it was intended to be when we were looking at the referendum. We pulled it off of that and made it into a classroom, meaning we're not going to subdivide. We're going to reorganize those small groups into some other way in order so that we could utilize that classroom as a regular ed classroom. Those are the types of things we did in order to accommodate. And again, we looked at all of the five together to try to find that number that worked for all of them, and the number was 20.
This is going to be, this is going to be a puzzle piece. Every year we'll be looking at this. So just for example, when I read the, earlier with my comments, we moved, you know, to get more space, Valley View had a little bit more space right now, and that's why we consolidated the preschool program over at Valley View. And then moving also programs out of Willie Mason over to Cedar Hill to give us a little bit more space at Willie Mason. That's going to buy us a little time and remove the case track. We're constantly looking at this puzzle piece. We're constantly looking at this puzzle piece.
So if we, when we look at this Cedar Hill schematic, you see in the bottom left-hand corner, a number of students projected for each classroom. If we were to look at the rest of the four, the remaining four schools, at their allocation of classroom sizes, would they be similar? So would Woodmont have classroom sizes similar?
Well, the different...
Classroom enrollment, actually.
Yes, we have whatever the projected enrollment was. Now, in case of Woodmont, you have three sections at every single grade. You don't, that, they are the only building who has three sections at every single grade. Many places have three sections, but only in certain places where it's necessary. And what we ended up doing is we adjusted. So maybe this year, you might have three third grades, but we don't need three third grades next year. We need three fourth grades. We're going to shift the staff. And that's why one of the comments that I made in terms of when we looked at the elementary across all the areas, we're adjusting classes and staffing in order to accommodate enrollment.
So when you did this, it was, you're getting the sense that it was a holistic approach? You, you, you moved programs from one school that was teetering on space issues, moved it to another school that had more space. And that's, I mean, it sounds like it was something innovative that you did, so it was the first time.
Yes. The other thing we looked at in the case of moving programs was consolidating programs because we could build efficiency for that. So for example, by putting all of the preschool, we usually split the preschool between, it usually Cedar Hill or Valley View. By putting them all together, we could get a compensable scale. We could have all the resources that were necessary for one preschool program to be in one location, which meant that we could reallocate resources to other things that were also necessary. That type of moving things around is falling under that administration element that I mentioned as being one of the things that we made changes to. We are administering to students based on their needs and consolidating services and improving those services in order to go and provide better service to the kids.
And is that what you wanted to say? This is what works this year and may not work next year. So you're, you're going to be constantly...
We're always going to be going back to the same model of take the kids, see what's happening in that building, and then make the decision that's the best for that building, trying to keep it compatible to the other four.
And we'll be adjusting the projection numbers that the board forgave us, because now the housing isn't happening, and the phone isn't happening, the number's going to be offset a little bit. So it might buy us a little bit more time, but we have to constantly readjust those numbers as we see the housing market move.
What, is it in terms of programs at the schools? What programs are taking out of Woodmont from the schools?
Woodmont hasn't had anything at their location in a number of years. Neither, say, in Phil Dale. Both of those had things pulled out many, many years ago. What we were able to do, though, with Woodmont is we were able, similar to on here with the boost box for grade fours and the media center, we were doing things like that a lot, where we are putting, consolidating some of those small group construction areas that are currently in place now and allocating them back to full classrooms so that that way that we could keep that average number down.
So where are those small construction classes being?
Well, what we ended up doing was, we ended up changing the way that those programs were being offered. So some of it is utilizing spaces like media centers, whether or not being utilized. Some of them is utilizing different rooms for specific purposes. It was more changing the way we thought about the program and how could we do it better by doing these consolidations similar to the preschool program in Valley View, but now do it within a building? How could you consolidate it differently? How could you move it to a different location that would free up quality real estate, a place where I could put a class of twenty students, and move this smaller construction to some other space that's maybe not, than to be underutilized in some way?
Programs that, like one school gets over another, these are standalone programs, like preschool for special education. I think that kind of answered the question a lot. It's not like one school getting something to another school. It's not like that. They're standalone programs that just fit and where is the space?
Correct.
Correct. Do you need to go? Sure. This is the kind of question.
Correct.
And you can give a quick answer to the question.
Correct.
Over here is on...
The thirtieth of April.
Everyone has a vote if you have any questions, and if somebody just got a little excited, please don't move. We have a question, we can call it in the call. Or if you're here. If there's any questions, we'll hear them twice on this. We'll lock them.
Yeah, to say thank you, since we did all task and some of the efficient and latest
And, you know, it's, again, we've been talking about this for a while. It's getting more and more challenging each year, as you showed you with the different costs that are going up, much more than two percent. And we also have the space issue that's going to become a real challenge as well. So these two challenges are what's going to, we're going to start working, we already talked about having meetings this summer about how we're going to build next year's budget based on all the data we have. So we're going to start a lot earlier each year.
We have a compromise, so we're looking at how we can save some pace on the type of ramp. We're going to trade on this. Hopefully, we're not going to have to, one of these kids won't. We want to move that.
You're exactly right, Charlie. You got a huge influx of law enforcement, a huge challenge, ensuring this is not, yes.
For two years, one built there and one by the whole dump yard. The one by the dump yard is not in full, but they're out there.
Both of them are taking, Mill Creek as well as Avalon Valley are taking. They're about fifteen percent occupied, and as far as we know, they're about seventy, eighty percent done in completion with their certificate vacancies. So we're expecting by the summer, you should see a hundred percent opening, and then we'll see how, how much movement we have with people moving in.
I'm just, if Woodmont has an infancy of almost eighty kids, based on fifteen to a cent, it's not going to be a problem.
Well, the projections are still based on a hundred percent occupancy. So the projections are still a little bit off based on timing of what's been happening with the movement of the construction. So that's why we'll be seeing over the summer, how much movement do we really have with people moving in? So those numbers might be an adjustment, but we have to plan that first part.
Correct. This is a plan as though everything is fully operational. It's not ten percent, it's a hundred percent occupied. Additionally, it's taking into consideration, we know that last year, last summer, there was a shortage of housing within Monmouth. There was demand, but there were no houses to buy. If interest rates drop, which is what they're projecting, then people are going to begin opening up their homes, they're going to sell their homes. And now you're going to have new floods where someone who didn't have any children in the schools is going to be selling their home to someone who does. And even aside from the new construction, we're expecting to see additional children coming in across the board due to the movement of housing stock if interest rates drop.
Then it won't be nice. Lots of focus has been on your space and enrollment, too, but that one point you made at the beginning by going to the two percent cap every year, which I know we're not unique in this district. In all the years that I've been here to, you know, park my kids over here and so forth, the majority of the years, there's always been that space for doing new programs, keeping, keeping everything that we have now. But looking at the really, which is not our own benefit, it's been increasing, that's like what eighty-eight percent of the budget. So, I mean, eventually, seeing to me, like, it's not going to be compatible. And I know I've been hearing that a lot, but, you know, are you concerned in the next few years of that being even a bigger challenge for the enrollment or just a thing that, what are your, I'm curious, because it seems like right at the edge a little bit?
Yeah, we are concerned. And that's why Dr. Warman mentioned that the budget process, which usually starts in November or December, is going to start in July, because we have to begin to find even newer ways to be innovative that add cost savings in order so that we can continue providing the programs we provide, but doing it in a more cost-effective way. The goal always is that we figure out a way to do it better, do it cheaper, but that the kids never notice the difference.
Thank you, Kattine, and thank you, Joanna, and thank you, the entire business office.
Anything else, Dr. Warman, Kattine? Okay, let's move on then. Section G, the A's on reports, finance facilities, Karen?
I could not, for a presentation, that could be it.
Okay, good. Kurt Clobin, Michelle?
We just had a meeting for April.
April one. Policy, Joe?
We had our march fit. We discussed updates concerning these policies and regulations. We also had a discussion on four existing policies, the first meeting of the seventeen policies in the region.
Thank you. Communications, Mike Rockport, Norwood. Tell me the A's on, Jersey School Board, Karen?
A little bit to revert on, since it's been a month. February twenty-fourth, New Jersey School Board held its two-word membership orientation weekend. It was very successful, just a weekend, basically a boot camp for new board leaders who have official mandatory training. February twenty-seventh was the governor's budget address, and I feel very fortunate that I was able to be in the Assembly Chamber to witness that report. Tomorrow night is Morris County's On Some Hero Program, this program that identifies and celebrates and awards student seniors, high school seniors, who maybe are not that student that always gets recognized, someone that perhaps has overcome challenges in their life and is always ready to help someone or provide some service. And the program is, I always say, it's for part working and part refreshing. So tomorrow, we'll honor one of our home On Some Heroes in Morris County today. There was a legislative committee meeting on March night. Senator Angelo McKnight and Assemblywoman Becknully were both with us. They're both freshmen in their positions, although Senator Angelo McKnight wasn't Assemblywoman. Assemblywoman Becknully is a current superintendent of schools, so she definitely has her pulse on education and understands the challenges that we face. They both sit on their respective education committees. March thirteenth, the lead group met, and we got a chance to meet the acting commissioner, Kevin Deager. He seems to be someone that is very interested in making New Jersey schools the best they can be and keeping them in that way. On March fifteenth, we're there at this math test budget. And yesterday, I had a very exciting day. I was able to attend a conference, a Williams Leadership Conference, where two of our own supervisors, Tamar Spencer, Dr. Sandy Schwartz, presented a program called I'm Too Busy and the Lies That We Tell Ourselves. It was quite interactive, a lot of fun, basically taking stress and turning it into something Also there to support them was Andrea Woodring, as well as the supervisor of elementary education, Jessica Nathan. And, I know, I hear you, Joe.
Just ignore it.
Yeah. That ends my report. Oh, on the twenty-first, this Thursday, lead group is meeting with the governor, so we'll have a place to do that. Thank you.
Morris County School Board, Michelle?
That's meeting the year we might have a base second roster, you could represent our audience.
Morris County Educational Services, Joe?
Yes, we had our March thirteenth, the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget.
And D A C?
We're just met on March seventh, and we had a presentation on football security, safety program that Walter, in fact, we have a whiteboard at the police station, so if anyone wants to go and see what they have, check that out. We also have, we host a community program, written motori, on April fifth, at the senior house in six P M. We're going to have some great speakers there. And also, on May seventeenth, is New Jersey Division Network's annual conference of N C R U, depending on the football.
Charlie, Populon Fighters?
The Black Boys, which is on Mount Everest, and it's April seventeenth.
Karen, the A's on Cedar Hill?
Karen.
Charlie, O'Neil? Joe, Valley View?
Yes, that last Thursday, the fourteenth. Charlie loves football this week. There's a discussion of the fundraisers and funding grant program for playground, as long as, say, the date of the tricky train on November fifteenth, and the all-country club. One question was brought up to me at the meeting about the other program. If we consider, if we need to bring options for parents to, to the P A option. So, well, Tom, that's, 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 that's.
John, Willie Mason, Norwood. Okay, Woodmont, Mike Palmer?
Oh, boy.
Okay. Bizar, Michelle?
Nina, last night, scheduled on the first companion for the next school year is Long River Mag, Field Trip with fans during Halloween, where we mentioned at the musical, we do this Thursday and Friday, and also the new girls' ability lessons on basic.
Okay. Mike Rockport, High School?
Yes, we met on March fourth. It was a fairly quiet meeting. Swiss, a couple of highlights from there. First is course selections for the next year for all grades. And I think you have until March twenty-fifth to parent acknowledge Genesis and see what the courses are for their child, making suggestions or recommendations to change, change the, change the schedule. N J A G P A testing occurred March eleventh, and then the multiple upgrades. Also, midterms, there is a survey for the midterms came out. There was about three hundred and forty or so people who responded to the survey, which is a good two hundred people less than last year. So we're taking that as a sign that people are generally happier with the schedule than how it went this year than last year. The administration is going through the survey and the feedback, and they want to continue to make adjustments and changes for next year as well, for the midterms and final exams, schedule. Teacher appreciation lunch is coming up after spring break, probably around the eighth or so. The next meeting is May sixth, and May sixth is going to be a virtual.
Thank you. Negotiations, Karen, M C A.
So since the last meeting, the association and the board teams met twice on February twenty-seventh and March fourteenth. I believe that both the association and the board teams felt that we made good progress at the last meeting, and I just want to thank the association for their continued professionalism and friendliness. Negotiating can be hard, but we just have a, I mean, we just have a terrific working relationship, and I, I and the team will appreciate it.
Okay, M C A, Charlie?
Yes, so, we've been, we've had, we've got a special organization tomorrow.
That's it. And Joe?
I'm sorry, I just had one thing on negotiations. We do have two more planned meetings on March twenty-fifth and April.
And Joe, and T S I A?
Right there, we're still in the weekend, so.
And while we're on the A's on and all that, I'll just mention that Tom, myself, Charlie, Kattine, we met with the council committee, and we discussed a number of important topics. We're talking about getting sidewalk put in on Vermont Road so that kids can walk through Mill Creek to the elementary school. June with the council committee, mentioning door locks, it mentioned as well. We're also planning on doing some pedestrian safety upgrades around Bizar, including overhead flashing lights. This should be completed over the spring and summer of this year, and also it's going on an ongoing basis over the next few years, pushed by the flashing lights at all schools. Talked a little bit about, uh, snow removal, shared services. Um, are there any options for shared services? We're always going to talk to them about it. We also talked about existing housing projects, so these would be the North Creek and Avalon ones that we've mentioned a few times. Um, and we also touched on the Bear Shore Housing starting, or Bear Shore Housing negotiations starting next year, in twenty twenty-five. Um, there've been a number of rounds of Bear Shore Housing negotiations that occurred over the years and are going to start another round next year, so we obviously care a lot about the housing issue in town, um, it does affect the schools tremendously. It's nice to see that the township committee took the initiative and entered into negotiations with Bridge Gardens to try to preserve some of the affordable housing that's been in the Bridge Gardens unit. To see how much more we're, uh, anyways, that's what we do with township committee, I'm sure. Okay, moving on to public participation, the first section of public participation. This is for the public to come and, uh, tell us what you think about any items on the agenda. If you can reserve to come to items on the agenda, use the microphone. Seeing none, let's move on. Section resolution, items, I, who then? Do you have a name? And a name? Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask a question on the agenda real quick for the benefits and the members of the public here tonight? K four, user facility request. I know we had an email recently from Grace's Army Foundation. Is that request in the document K four that's been granted by? Did you, did you click on the link?
Yes. It is, it is included, we're just waiting on people.
Great, thank you. On the list, yeah. But can I go back and start with I? Two minutes? Any questions on the minutes? Section I, section J? Section K? Oh, there I have a question, thank you. Um, section, uh, so, by the way, in section K, is the option intended to buy the, uh, senior? Okay? Uh, section L, personnel in question? Section M, curriculum instruction technology in question? And section N, policy? Any questions on the, what's the reason of the policies that are listed? None? Okay, ask for it. Okay. Oh, did that one seem good? It was?
Yeah, Charlie said we could.
Yeah, it, yeah, we have it. Yeah, we have it. Okay, uh, call, call those, please?
Mr. Brown?
Yes, everything except the mention I'm saying.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Dr. Corinna?
Yes.
Mr. Daltry?
Yes, except for section K one, checking seven, eight, five, one.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrusino?
Yes.
Ms. Upman?
Yes.
Dr. Lou Brown?
Yes.
There's no closed session? No, there's no closed session. So sections Q and R, all visits, need visits, and we'll call comments?
Uh, just that, uh, I had the thrill of reading to Kenny Gardner's and second graders on March seventh, and I couldn't believe how much these second graders were learning, I was at third graders. Um, so that was a bit exciting, and I, I wanted to extend my personal condolences to the Peter family. My daughter went to school with Kenny, and, um, they just lived down the street from us, and it's really nice.
Mr. Rappaport?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, we all met at this conference in that, uh, you know, students and everybody. And he was a recent public service worker on the, uh, tour. And I was chairman of the last Thursday, and it was my, uh, brother there. He gave a nice standing speech, a lot of people complimenting him on it. Sandy Schwartz, with the Integrated Leadership Salon, I was with him. I would hope for a future honor teacher, that we could get three more people on administrative staff for the intent. There's a hundred and fifty people there, and just that, and Michelle, we've been representing for, uh, the, uh, world. And I, I think that, um, answer our whole thing, uh, uh, the third presentation and some of the, a lot of people were there, and, uh, well, it's, uh...
And I would also echo Karen's comment on how many other of us were at Woodmont for the meeting. I had the pleasure of kindergarten first grade, but I know you were there, and other people.
Seven fourth grade.
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Pacha, they're there, so a few other of the attorneys, it was nice. Okay, moving on then to the second public participation section. If you have any comments at all, or anything in particular that you would like to address to the board, please come to the microphone, state your name, address, and resume what you're thinking.
We just wanted to give our heartfelt thank you for approving the Grace's Army Foundation 5K that we're going to be holding in September, which is pediatric cancer awareness month. So, our community should be so proud, it's a great, my heavy hitter, cancer survivor, so thank you so much, appreciate you.
I have a board running.
Yes, thank you.
Yay! Okay, uh, if there's something else, send to the board, those are closed? It's your turn, okay? Turn.